This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
We're going to get down to about six thirty. This is the annual review of the projects that we have upcoming for 2020. So you will have more formal opportunities through public hearings and access and contracts that you'll be taking action on. But this is our first look. So Dave and his engineering staff, we've been working hard to put together a program that can work within the funding that's been provided through the CID. And yeah, I'm going to remember Dave to take us to it, so.
Oh, I have some aerial drawings that we usually have. We have our map that will go on our website, the eleven by seventeen. And in the package that we're passing out has all of the aerials that you see on the screen, and also a little narrative that I'll go through in the beginning portion of it. We have twelve reconstruction streets, called new streets that include utilities, a new paving surface, three milling fill projects which are just milling off the top, a few inches of asphalt, repairing the curb and then repaving. And then we have sixteen alleys this year, in addition to that, a few carryover streets from last year, the bridge project and some parts of trails. So I'll just go through each one, pointing out the high points that may be coming up when we have our hearings, and then feel free to ask any questions and any I can help answer with all those. The first three projects are Chippewa Street from First Avenue to Fifth. This is one of the streets that Jeff was mentioning yesterday with a hundred and thirty-five euro water. So Chippewa Street, and second is going to be the next one, that goes from water up to lake, and then we have one block, Water Street here. They're all similar projects, all very old utilities. Now, we were going to do a milling fill on this portion last year, just to get a few extra years out of it, since First Avenue was down in the summit. But then working with Jeff's crews, they really felt the utilities wouldn't worth having an overlay on that, and so we did not overlay it, we wanted a full recon. Not too much out of the ordinary with these. I don't think we'll have too much for controversy. They all have sidewalks, nor on both of these, we're looking at just replacing it as it is. Though they're high dollar projects, because they're quite long, but there's, you know, in excess of eighty properties that the left service lines would be replaced with these. So these are some that we looked at, you know, there's five blocks of Chippewa Street, three of them are pavements in pretty rough shape, the other two, the pavement is marginal. So we get in and we try to do all of it, it's a little bit cheaper to do it all at once, and then make sure that the residents are able to take advantage of the alley, or the left service line replacement. So those are the first three. Anybody have any question on those? Yes, here.
So that one block on Water Street, and then we talked about it as a milling fill last year, and we decided we didn't have room for bike lanes, but they weren't going to change the curb, or there aren't going to be kind of partial bike lanes or anything. So it looks like we have the right way to do bike lanes if we reconstruct.
So our initial thoughts on this, and VTAC had comments also, I was at the VTAC meeting in December, try to continue down street bike lanes from this intersection to the west, and then as we get into replacing pavement markings, look at it with this block, with the essence of Norweth building on the left turns, like you had with bike lanes. And then there's a request to look at shrinking up this radius on the corner here, so we're going to look at how, if we can reduce that at all, but still be able to get a bus to go around, because it's an acute angle, so it's a little bit, that's why it's a little bit wider through there. And then I believe they requested a, they requested us to look at scatter crossing, if I remember correctly. So it'll be all on pavement, all the details, so as long as we're redoing the curb and gutter, we're going to make sure we got room for those bike lanes on that.
Okay. All right. This has a follow-up for that. So that scramble or scatter intersection idea, I think part of that, I mean, from my perspective, that would be helpful, because if you're running a bike north on the, out of the university, on the trail essentially across the bridge, you, and you were to cross at the crosswalk, you end up kind of on the wrong side of this, you end up on the left side of the street rather than the right side of the street to be able to continue north on the bike lanes on First Avenue. So would that be, would we be able to make it, make it so that a biker could easily cross over to the correct side of First Avenue?
If that's scatters and then they, there's a hole with the signals and they can go through the intersection, they can go diagonal, they can go, you know, every direction there, so they would be able to do that. The other thing is, you know, the bicyclists could use the underpass under Water Street too, but I know it's, it's probably not the, if they're using a trail to go, they can go this direction. But yeah, we'd go probably from about here, back, back to the crosswalk here and then over. And what that is, is just a zebra strike that's in there. The drawback for it is it does, no traffic is going for thirty seconds, twenty seconds or so, and then the future maintenance cost to repaint it. So it's something that we're looking at, but that was a request, if I remember correctly from the VTAC meeting. The next ones, north of Seymour, or north of Birch Street in the Sonoma, Mount Nemo area, we've been working the last five, six years on replacing those. South Slope Terrace and Wedgewood are two of the last streets up there. The utilities are approaching seven years old. In the past, we've had issues with projects that haven't had sidewalks on the routes. South Slope is kind of interesting, because this portion here was redone in the late nineties with utilities, the payments getting brought over, ready to mill and fill it here, and then a full reconstruct down this direction, and then Westwood going north. Every place that we're reconstructing has sidewalk already, so we're replacing, we're proposing to replace all the sidewalk where it is. Where it goes left from Mount Nemo up to Sonoma Parkway, they had a discussion in the late nineties, and there are some topographical constraints, it's really narrow there, and the hills go up on the side. So with the, the topographical constraint being present there, and the fact that it's a milling fill, and we're not looking at redoing all the curb and gutter, we weren't going to be proposing a sidewalk in that location with the project coming forward, but it was deferred in the nineties, it wasn't eliminated, so that will be something that, if there's a strong feeling, might be discussed at the public discussion for it. Otherwise, it's old utilities. This area of town will pretty much be reconstructed when we're done with this residential neighborhood. So nothing, nothing controversial.
Can I just catch up? I'll just kind of slip the wheel, before I get you started. And I noticed in the listing of reconstruction projects, if it says reconstruction, like well, number one, reconstruction, one plus your utilities, does that mean yes, you're going to do a full utility replacement at all?
Yes, yep.
So are all of those going to be utilities replaced?
Correct, I should have pointed that out. I just tried to put the, so reconstruction intends to replace the utilities, the pavement and the curb, and I just tried to put points of interest in here.
I just noticed that some of it said we have utilities in some of the projects.
Yep, so it was, all of the, all of the first five that we've done, that we've gone over are intended to be from the bottom up with utilities. So really nothing out of the ordinary with these projects, just proposing to replace them as, with the current width that they are currently with the infrastructure. There's Wedgewood. And the next one is Fairfax Street, and we originally, the map goes down to Steel's, but when you get south of Henry, this portion here is the town of Washington, and it's not an acceptable budget, so for this year, the pavement's worse north of Henry Avenue, and we're going to pull an effect in Henry and not do this first this year, but over the next five years, pretty much all Fairfax will need some kind of treatment. That's a full reconstruct again with utilities, and when we're at the intersection of Claremont, there's discussion with Ivy going in at Kmart, even though there aren't bike lanes on Fairfax, can we rework those islands so in the future, if bike lanes are added, the islands at Claremont would be able to support bicycle lanes. The one thing that stands in the way of, of bike lanes are there, there are some blocks that have parking restricted on both sides, and some that don't have any parking restrictions, so you would need a parking restriction ordinance change to free up space on the road to get bike lanes. It won't be with this project, it'll be something in the future, but there is a desire to try and have bike lanes at some point from Claremont down to Gulf Road on Fairfax. So it gets challenging through the rock cut, but if you, if you trade parking for the bike lanes, physically you have enough room for that. And so we won't be taking on that challenge with this one, but at least from Henry to the north, we'll be doing a reconstruct, and the pavement's pretty rough out there, it'll get really rough this spring with a pause, and new utilities in that section. And then in the upcoming years, we'll work with the town of Washington to go from Henry to the south, and then we'll be back in the city of Eau Claire jurisdiction, south of there.
Dave, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of on-street parking that's utilized over there in the first place, because it seems to be kind of a, as wide as that road, because it seems a little bit narrower than some of the other arteries like Rudolph.
This stretch through here is thirty-six, I believe, face to face. There are some, it narrows down when you get through the cut, and then I believe it's forty-two or forty-four when you go down myself, it's quite a bit wider when you get down the south. So Rudolph, I believe, is forty feet, forty or forty-two, so it is a little bit wider than that. There is some parking in the residential neighborhood, not, not a ton of it, but you do see some in this area here on the street. It wasn't, I mean, there was a discussion, we have a skate street for those bike lanes, and when the time comes, we'll have it here. So when we have that talk, we'll, we'll do comments and be able to say if it's like twenty-five percent utilized when we check, or thirty percent, or fifty, or so forth. But if you look at Ivy and Employment Center up there, and you look at the, when you get on myself with the housing, both single family and multifamily, if there was a corridor that could support bicycle lanes, this one does make some sense to look at in the future. So at least for the summer, it is a, you know, it's a collector route, so we'll have it detoured, and we'll be starting on the north end of it with the reconstruct for it.
The section stays the same there, coming out of Claremont?
Correct.
Because the right turn only up the front of the road, isn't it?
Correct, we're not going to open this up, this island to let the left turners come and go right here, so. Yeah, what we're trying to do is shrink some of the islands if we can, just to make room with pavement markings, so a bike can get up there.
Is there a way to get a, so there's that furniture that comes in from the, goes west to east, and depends at the Fairfax, or, there's not really a good way to like walk across there?
There's a request, I think, for a crosswalk here.
Would it be possible to get that close to the intersection?
A crosswalk? Um, the problem is you get queuing there, and there was a discussion, if you have a crosswalk there, would the queuing, would that have the cars create separation, so people could cross between them? So we're, we're looking at that, because it's, that's not a good intersection to do anything other than drive-through right now. So whatever, whatever improvements we can make, we will, but it's, it's tough. There's, that's the nineteen fifties design standards with the front of those being at, that close create problems.
And it says it is, you can't go up to the Claremont intersection and cross there, because there's no crossing of Fairfax on the south side at the intersection of Claremont. There's no like pedestrian buses or anything.
Yeah.
And no sidewalk on the, along the front of the road on the other side anyway.
Yeah, they're talking about that they just walk in the street and ride bike in the street, or they're some users. So, so we'll, we'll try and get as many improvements as we can pedestrian wise in a fairly constrained intersection for that. But yeah, Fairfax will be working on for the next few years, coming up. Yeah, any other questions with that one?
When are you expecting the construction on this?
Um, I would say, I'll be June, I would say, May or June. May is usually pretty early. We'll, we'll try to get, this will be in the second round of projects to go to the city council, it wasn't in the first introductions for today, so it'll be before the first meetings, you know, February, and then it takes about a month to design it, once we get the council approval for it, and then to get a bid, and then awarded in the second part of the process. It's usually awarded by early May, and then it takes the contractor a while to get mobilized and to get in there. So generally, May to June is the earliest unless we have something bid the year prior that doesn't get done, like we have three this year, then they get in that right away in April of the next year. So, Fairfax. The next one, this will be an interesting project with Riverview Drive, starting in Welsh Court, if you're going to the north, boat launch for Riverview Park. It'll be a very similar project to what we did on Short Street and Melby, it's a rural cross-section. Now we're looking at having an urban cross-section with curb and gutter. Looking preliminarily at what we can fit in between with the water coming in close and the road core being raised, what we can fit in. Looks like we can have a sidewalk, we can fit a sidewalk in on the west side, and a trail on the east side, north side. So we have a sidewalk section that would go through these houses, and then there would be a trail section, what we will likely propose is a trail, multi-use trail that would connect up into the oil field, and would actually continue up to here. Next here, we have the neighborhood to the north, which doesn't have any sidewalk or curb and gutter, and will at least have a connection to the neighborhood if the direction is to go through the original, connect it with sidewalks, then it'll be, you'll have full pedestrian connectivity. And then, working with community services, we're going to look at adding on-street parking in this area on the east side, but not on the west side. And this, this will be done, and then the remaining stretch, we did a project from Airport Road in last year, and then this year will be the south portion, and then next year will be the portion that will connect it, and then all of Riverview Drive will be done. Replacing utilities, pavement, pretty straightforward project, it'll affect Riverview Park during the summer, and you have to be cognizant of the marathon also with this.
So I'm remembering the neighborhood, is that all that, decided to have sidewalks and those things like that, and does it come down with that?
That's the neighborhood to the north of this. So the, we haven't, I haven't heard anymore. Typically, we, we get a lot of, a lot of feedback when our surveyors go out, and that kind of stirred things up a little bit. But then they go back to sleep until, that one is, so I'm planning to take this to Water Ways and Parks. The project to the north of it, planning to have a meeting actually out in the neighborhood, because it will be very similar to Keith and Path from last year, and from the initial feedback, probably more emotional than Keith and Path were, so I don't want to bring all of that into the council chamber without talking, without meeting with them. And that's going to involve not having sidewalk on both sides, I could see picking one side and having a route going through the neighborhood, like has occurred in other neighborhoods in this area in the past. This one, the city owns the majority of the land, there's only a few private residents down here that will be getting sidewalks, so typically when, when established houses get sidewalks, they don't like it, but it's, it's not dissimilar from any of their neighbors in there, so it's.
You said they're going to continue, is there open through construction, will it be a lane, or?
I mean, this will be closed, and it will be detoured, so to get into the north boat launch, the park will remain open, and you'll be able to get to this boat launch here, but there's a forest main in here for sanitary, and then a water main also that we're going to be replacing.
Okay.
So it will be closed here, detoured up and around Airport Road, down Riverview from the north, to use the north boat launch. The south boat launch will be, will be open during construction, the next year will flip flop.
I think you've decided to put the trail on the north slash east side as opposed to the south slash west side.
For shifting, you have the existing road core over there, so to try and keep it in there. There's less, we can widen, we have the parking, and it's, it's less fill if we keep the bulk of the street over the existing road, and you have a little bit on the left side or on the west side for the sidewalk, as opposed to the wider trail versus the inside when you go out there. So, I mean, you could, you could have it either way, but it's going to cost more, because to keep the road in there without removing the whole road core, you don't want to rehab it, or you don't want to shift it too much, because you're hit settling once you get outside of the driving lanes. So to try and, try and keep it where the bulk of the road is generally over where it is now, that's how it fits on, on that side.
It just seems like the trail would be, from what the users see, it would be better on the south slash west, particularly because there's the underpass underneath the north crossing that's on the south slash west side, and then there's also the park and the river on the west side there. Do you see users going up into the wells on there?
That's what is, that's, that's one of our primary things, cross-country races and joggers, and it's a horse apiece, engineering wise and cost wise, to keep her to go that route. You have a little bit more, it's really tight, right here, the sidewalk has to be on the back of the curb, because where the water's on there, so it's, it's real tight to get both of those in. So, yeah, I mean, it was just cost wise, a little better.
The sidewalks get really hard too, to the end of it.
Yeah, they, Jeff's folks, they closed the restrooms in the, in the park, but the north boat launch, and the water gets to be high.
Are you proposing bike lanes as well?
It'll be wide enough to strip them, but not right now with this, so we'll see if, what, what the, what it looks like north of here, but it'll be wide enough, it'll be similar to Short Street. Having them stop here without, you know, the on-street bike lanes tend to be your, your commuters, your people going to work, doing stuff like that, we try. I guess, it was our first thought that this would be more recreational bicyclists, and people with pushing carts or strollers, or bringing their kids with bags up to the park, and they would be on the trail instead of on the street. And then depending upon what the discussion is, when you get into the neighborhood, and you have all of the residents north of there, if there's a strong push for it, then all you have to do is put that, the bike markings on. But physically, it will be wide enough so we can add that at this time.
So there's currently parking allowed on that street, right? Both sides, or?
I, I believe so, it's pretty narrow, so when you park on both sides, well, I can, you want to know now?
That's okay.
But very similar to going, what we did on Short Street and Melby, before and after for here.
Do you have to worry about the airshow reconstruction?
This one isn't quite as bad as the airshow, but we will, I don't, this, I don't think this would even be ready to start before the airshow anyway. That's, you know, like twelfth, I think, thirteenth of June, so it's an early June for that.
So would you be creating like painted crosswalks between the trail and the?
Yep, we want to have crossings.
And assist to parks and stuff.
Yeah, for mid-block crossing up here, probably looking at a RRFP up there. Pump outs, so we have parking, and then you have pump outs similar to Forest Street, to help shorten the crossing distance and make it a little bit safer up there. I think we're looking at, at this, at this location here, trying to keep it across, maybe another one at the north boat launch.
Do you see having to rebuild a lot of trees?
There are some, we're looking, when we get into the park here, if the sidewalk, if we bring a sidewalk into this mid entrance, instead of going along the side here, and then the connection to the neighborhood, because it gets really tight to get sidewalk through here anyway, and the main connection going up there is on the trail, then we wouldn't, but if you have sidewalk along here, yeah, you're going to, there's going to be trees lost through there. The next ones are Oxford Avenue, and then Maxon Street, that goes from Oxford over to Working with the, there's a development that has started right here, so we're working timing of the projects with the residential development that is going in. But Oxford Avenue, our initial thoughts are to have a look very similar to Barstow Street, Graham Avenue, some streetscape on it, concrete pavement, on-street parking on both sides, decorative lighting. And then Maxon Street will be just a replacement street utilities for that. The utilities are old in this area, Oxford pavement is shot, it's among the worst in the, in the city, and.
If Maxon Street, there is no sidewalk in there, I think the other street, but past the Bellinger Street, there's a sidewalk in there, but on the sections, is it, are you planning to construct it as, are you planning to get any sidewalks on that there?
We're going to try to get sidewalk on both sides. It gets, right now, we're working with, there's a strong desire from where the housing is going to have as much on-street parking. You know, we have a limited room in there, and we're kind of trying to weigh, do you have sidewalk at the expense of parking, or do you have sidewalk and only parking on one side? So that's one thing we're working through. With Oxford and Maxon, and when we get up to Platte Street, and we jump north of Platte Street, we're trying to make it as walkable as possible when we, when we're doing our project, so we're having bump outs in Oxford, similar to Barstow Street, so you can still have traffic through there, but it's a little bit safer. Really hoping on this area, at least what we can do with our streets and infrastructure, kind of set the tone for this to be, you know, a nice up and coming part of town also.
Do you change your plan for the intersection of Madison Street and Oxford, or?
No, we're, that was, we're going to tie in right here where the, this is, this is Newark down here, so we're going to pick up here and go. And any changes that would occur here, we would, we would add to Madison Street at some point in the future, but not changing any traffic patterns, the only thing we're doing is introducing some parking there, widening the street a little wider than it is now, so.
I just, I'm amazed that nobody's concerned about the backup on the right turns on Oxford and Texas, or Madison, because, and if people cut across, drive at the end of the quick trip, it's, I think it's, to me, just.
It'd be nice if there was no left turn for the first one, and the quick trip, and you had to go to the second one.
Yes.
Because it does get backed up there.
Yeah, it's a tough area, it's, it's a lot of.
You may hear that it's a driver, you hear kind of thing, but it's just like a lot of the last year, and then with the end, you know.
It's a very busy, so it'll be a little bit calmer on Oxford when we're, when we're through, and we're not going to have parking, we can't have parking in this block here, there's just too much going on. So once we get past that, these blocks up here, we invite the right pride, everything, the children's theater, the residential, but it's, yeah, it's, it's challenging. One thing we're hoping to do, if this is a little bit calmer through here, more traffic... yeah, it's, it's challenging. One thing we're hoping to do, if this is a little bit calmer through here, more traffic, possibly both Bellinger Street, we're looking at improvements with this intersection up here, um, possibly roundabout up here when Oxford goes north, um, and then doing something in this location that, um, might, might help a little bit of the, I apologize, my computer's in power saving mode, um. Then if there's more going this way over, if that's more, it probably could help a little bit, but it's just, Madison Street's tough.
It was a little bit of a head of a truck there. Like I guess the other question that I asked is, um, does that, do that, um, would you prefer to say that to you, maybe of the lock and building that sidewalk to my?
Um, some possibly, I think, and one of the projects that we have this, towards the end of the presentation is, uh, the underpass of Madison Street with the, the.
That's what I was gonna say, when the underpass goes in, then it's gonna make a difference. Otherwise, the trail comes on and it actually forces people from the trail to be part of that congestion that you're talking about.
But once it's, uh, once it's connected, um, you'll, you'll have a few that will go over there. It's still, it seems, seems to me that people will even, to walk a little bit less, will go through a more stressful intersection when it goes down to the trail and around, so. So these will be big projects, um, if we get started in May, it'll be done in August of this year, but we're working on timing with the residential facility.
So the, is there like a, gonna be, I know that there's a lot of, you know, public engagement throughout the Canary District process, but it seems like there's an opportunity to do, to do some sort of visioning, work with, with folks on the design and the streetscape there. And I know there's no business improvement district right now, but.
That's what makes it, uh, so we're going in with a streetscape that's similar to, uh, Barstow, and I've been working with the consultants that, um, we already, you know, idea of economic development.
How do you?
Hired for the Canary North to see what kind of textures, what kind of streetscape pavers would would blend in, because I don't wanna use the same ones that we have on in the other downtown, because this is a unique area. Um, so pavers, their initial thoughts are pavers that will draw on the brick from the brewery project, from the Children's Museum. Our lights are pretty standard, um, for our decorative lights, um, just to keep the replacement. But we're planning, we we have a a layout for this, that we're planning to have an open house, um, if the brewery project or the Children's Theater someplace, I'll try and take feedback. And if it looks like it's favorable, um, then this is going to be one of the, um, one of the, the next, um, next, uh, projects. If the people, um, if the feedback is, you know, they wanna completely redo it, then it's something that this would end up going next year, that there would be time to go through and completely reinvent it. That's why we've been kinda messaging all along that we want walkable and more pedestrian centric, like the template we've had in our downtown streets that have been redone.
That's great. Is there, is there a plan for a lot of street trees that?
Yep, um, silversels, we're gonna try, um, they're, um, they're grates that they filter, they're basically, they're better than tree vaults for it, but you filter your stormwater through the trees and then it filters out the, uh, the impurities. So we have those, we wanna try. The lights that we get a lot of negative feedback on Summit Avenue, um, in the residential neighborhood, we're gonna move those over to here because they're the same lights on West Grant that the businesses really like over there, so, um, we're gonna hopefully fix that.
So you'd move them at the same time as the project?
Yeah, instead of bidding new lights for this, the new lights will go on to the, the tops of the poles on Summit and then we'll haul the, uh, the other ones here. So the biggest thing is just to get the utilities replaced in here and and get a start on what the rest of the, what the rest of the Canary is.
I think the pedestrian crossing at Maxon Street is gonna be really important to make that a very calm crossing, short crossing. So it's gonna be a lot of people going to the brewery from the apartments in the neighborhood over there.
It's, uh, laid out like Barstow Main and all the Barstow intersections, so you have bump outs, you don't have parking at the intersections. You have areas where you can have benches, bike racks, um, trash receptacles, um. It'll, it'll be, um, it'll, it'll be a very new street.
Be funny on how to just be one car lane in each direction, no center turn.
Correct. And there's Maxon. You more around Oxford? That'll probably be our prettiest street this year. Although River View will be nice. Comet Court, this was, uh, the petition on the, um, on the, uh, consent agenda today. And the C S M, uh, later in the business agenda, there's a utility, um, utility and street petition that was submitted by the property owners on on both sides. Uh, when there's a new street and they're, and they're, um, assessed for sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer, and the street, it ends up being, um, about a hundred percent of the cost of the street with the initial assessments are, um, paid for with us, so.
What's the length of that cul-de-sac?
Uh, three hundred and twenty feet, so it's it's shorter than the seven hundred for the ordinance. The neck, there's some cul-de-sacs over to the, to the east, um, so they're thirty-six feet wide face to face. We're gonna match those just so they're all consistent and, um, even though it's within the distance from the school, it's shorter than that seven hundred feet, so sidewalks not being proposed at this time. This is a project that will be, that's in the works. Last year, the, the council approved a land purchase off of Jeffrey's Road. This is the original part of Annie Lane that was plaid and it's just showing for representative purposes. Um, but we're working with a land development engineer to try and get the street system in that will most efficiently provide the largest number of developable, um, home sites for the lowest price. And then, once we get the right-of-way set and we have a plaque to board and it's recorded, just like the developers are, the city's doing this one, then we'll jump in with our, our engineering, um, designers and then design the street for it. Um, so it'll be a basic neighborhood street, only it will be in a new, a spot where a street doesn't exist currently. Looking at a sixty-foot right-of-way instead of a sixty-six foot right-of-way, um, sidewalk maybe on back of curb. Trying to get, trying to get the the street in as economically as possible to, um, facilitate, um, some affordable housing in this area. This one I don't think we'll, we'll have ready to construct until later this year. Would be the earliest that it would, would be under construction. Likely it would be then maybe this year and then construction early next year, but, um, that's a, an exciting, exciting project, nice area up there.
I don't know whether I'd like to have to say about back of curb, but is the mile?
It's all a, uh, it's a hilly area, so that's what we're working through with shrinking the infrastructure to allow billable area for homes. Do you have wider, it's, it's that's, it's all a, a dance that we're working with. An engineer that does it more professionally, um, to try and get the the alignments where it will maximize the usable space, but, maybe you only have sidewalk on one side of the street and you have a boulevard, I mean, that's an option too, that would save, that would save room. With those design options, I mean, we haven't started on that, we know we're gonna put a street with some utilities in that area and sidewalk of some sort. This is a milling fill just out of the mall, just milling off the top couple inches, putting new asphalt down for now. We did some on Crow Road a couple years ago, um, has fibers in it to reduce some of the reflective cracking. It worked well on the county's portion, so we're gonna try some in our portion. Not too exciting of a project, it'll be done about as fast as Water Street was this last year, um, week, week, week or two and we'll be in an hour there.
So you said that's a milling fill then?
Yep, so.
So the, so we've had some issues with, you know, the access for the routes one and six for the bus to get access to Target. And so the, the routes have changed to not go into the Target lot anymore. Instead, Route, uh, one stops over by the Goodwill and then people have to walk across Gateway. And then Route six actually stops on Grill Road now rather than even turning onto Gateway. And so people have to somehow cross Gateway and there's no sidewalk going through the Target lot to connect with any street.
There was a request for, had BPAC to have a crosswalk here, similar to what we put on the front of the road in front of ShopCo. So that was one that we're looking at, um.
Yeah, I think something like, I think like several crosswalks potentially, and there's also, it'd be nice to establish a, a proper bus shelter, or at least a path that is paved on the, for that bus stop.
Um, I'd have to check with Tom Wagner, but we just got S T B G Urban grant funds for thirty plus shelters and that might be in that program. That wouldn't be part of this program. The crosswalk is something that we can paint on there, but yeah, there, there is a sidewalk in, in the, uh, the Target site to go to over here. This is just, I mean, this intersection is just, it's the safest spot to get people into that area is to cross past this major driveway. That's where your traffic really drops off, um, understanding that people like to cross at the closest spot, so you're always gonna have people crossing here, but if you can somehow guide them to get used to crossing paths down there, that would be the safest.
It's hard with our hearing loss, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, yeah, I mean, anything that we can do with this street project to make it easier for people to be able to walk over there because it's a, it's a huge setback that Target does not want the bus to go through there.
What's Target?
Well, it's sort of complicated because the route, the bus route goes like around the, um, the way we had it, had the route going is the bus would go in front of the store and then it would take a right after the store and go behind and on the side of the Target, and they didn't want the buses going back there anymore. But previous to that, like five years ago, the buses would take a left after going in front of Target and go through the lot. But that's often creates conflicts between people pulling out of their parking spots and and the, and an efficient bus route too, so. Target doesn't appear to have a problem with the bus going left after going in front of the store, so. But then a transfer manager has a problem with that because of the.
It's a tough one.
So it's a, it's a kind of a tough situation. So I'm almost wondering if we may feel the points of other route options, but, um, it just kind of puts this Gateway project into, into that context.
And this one with the milling fills, it's intended to be a little bit more, you know, long-lasting treatment than chip seal, but it's certainly not something that we typically go into looking to, um, widen or add things or signals or, you know, like a reconstruct. So this is something to get, that we're looking at getting five to ten years. And Altoona and the county continually talk about possibly extending Gateway Drive across Outer Creek into, um, Claremont and Highway A in Altoona. I don't know where that's going to go, um, it seems like that those discussions are hanging off again. And if that ever went through, then Gateway Drive change is significant for the city, um, it's a lot bigger at that point, so. This is just something because we're having potholes and it's, it's starting to get a little bit, we're kind of buying some time up there. This is a stretch that's getting real, um, real bad, um, so we're just trying to buy time north of Truax and Truax up to Long, um, Mill and Fill, um, Third. At some point, as we keep going through the Canary with roads, uh, this part of the north end of the Canary or the, the gateway into the Canary, we're going to be looking at, um, something more significant, um, for traffic potentially. At the Truax, Third intersection, we're getting calls and cut-throughs in Folsom. The residents don't like the volume of traffic coming down Third going over Folsom. Um, but this year, we're just going to try to address the pavement concerns, uh, with that area.
So it'd be nice to be able to do something with sidewalks or a trail on that too, particularly, because on the east side, there's, or, or bike lanes or something, because there's, you're going up First Street on the right there. There's like no sidewalk on the right side and there's no bike lane or anything, so if we could, is there a possibility of doing something significant with that?
I could, we could see what there is for room for sidewalk, it doesn't connect to anything, so you, you have a short little stretch here, um. You have sidewalk on the, on the west side going through there, um.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to cross there too, so it'd be nice to. That's just, that's just a big gap in our parking pedestrian system, all the way from Garden Street. Uh, mostly like from Southern Street down to, uh, First Street down there, so. This is like half of the gap, but then it's only a milling fill as it is at some place, so.
Yeah, cause I, you look through here and you have, you know, it's, there's, there's some definite traffic improvements that could be had, but there's some difficult conversations to have if you do that in that area, um, though we're not ready right now to do that, so, um, we're just trying to buy some time with the pavement.
Did you know that I asked, is it difficult or how decisions are made to support it?
Well, I mean, there's some, there's some, there's some talk, you have Truax and then First Avenue is going to be getting more and more traffic as Canary develops. You have people coming down Third, um, Old Wells Road, uh, looking at, do you have, do you try to consolidate and have one roundabout in the intersection? Every place that you would look at doing that in that area, um, are some of the nicest owner occupied houses in that part of town. And it would require a right-of-way, um, purchase and likely, depending upon what route you went, um, likely home purchases. And so just land like at Roosevelt, so, um, we, we're not at the stage of trying to explore that yet, so.
You haven't had enough of the time to see.
Well, I, I kinda wanna see what Canary develops into too, uh, see what kind of draw we're having before we go and have some tough decisions. So for now, it's pretty, if you drove through there, it's pretty rough now, pretty deep potholes, so we're just trying to fix that right now.
Yeah, I'll just, um, second to you, maybe it's hard to walk there too, I mean, uh.
Yeah, I think.
Sorry, but doesn't it have any, you just kind of trace that around here and?
I think it would be, you know, not necessarily with this project, but at some point in the future, to be able to go all the way from the High Bridge, all the way along here up to the, the north crossing and have some vistas and maybe brace the canopy a little bit. So there, there is that, that opportunity there, but, um, I guess would this be more of a pavement maintenance project than a full reconstruct? We didn't, didn't tackle that, so. It is something that, I mean, the council can all, you know, during the discussion can include that, but at least our initial thoughts right now aren't.
Yeah, cause there's like a, there's a guardrail on the right side of most of that, and so there must be like some elevation change and there's like, the trees are just right there. So it seems like you would have to, I mean, the road is already relatively narrow, but there's no parking on either side allowed on most of that. So it's a matter of maybe getting bike lanes in there or something. I guess it's a little here.
And we were planning on just doing spot repair at the time when we really needed, so we're planning on a wholesale curb replacement like on Water Street where that came up, um, but. So Lake Street, um, a milling fill on Lake Street from Second to Fifth, um, just, uh, you know, similar to what we did on Water Street before. Uh, the one discussion would be if we eliminate parking on one side all the way through there, you can hook up to the bike lanes that stop at First and you would have bike lanes that would go from Lake Street from Barstow and actually Farwell Street all the way to Fifth Avenue. So before we bring this forward, we wanna have an open house with the neighborhoods, um, rental property, we're gonna talk to the courthouse, um, just to get a litmus test on the ordinance change. If there's no ordinance change for the bike lanes, then it's just a milling fill and it'll go back like it is now with the current parking.
So you, you really would only have to take parking from one side or about?
A couple of blocks on one side, it's not even a whole stretch.
Cause most of it doesn't even have parking.
Or it's restricted on one side already now, so. When we get down on the western end of it is where you start right. When we get down on the western end of it is where you start running into that.
So there are opportunities, you know, or, cause this is one of the areas we're thinking about adding bus shelters too. I think there's one bus, there's a couple of bus stops. There's one for Route nine, which would be the priority it seems. So it seems like with the reconstruction of the street, is that the best time to do a bus shelter? Can you kind of do that anytime?
Well, we, what we do with ours is we, um, work with Tom and find out where the stops are. And we, we pour the pad that gets people from the bus to the sidewalk. Um, and ours for the shelters, we haven't, we haven't done, um, in any of our projects, we haven't built a shelter. But I know he's got thirty of them and then there, that would be a citywide project where it would be one contract that would do like thirty of those and then we come in and do them at that time. I don't remember which locations there are for those, um, but I can give those and provide those when I start going through the, the projects I have. I can note that if it's one of Tom's, um, ones that he, he received. So then the alleys, I won't go through all of the alleys. There are a number of them. Uh, probably the, the most important ones, um, to try and help the quality of the neighborhood up in the Sundet neighborhood area, um, we're doing the alleys up in that area. Um, looking at, uh, working with the property owners itself, let's see if there's anything additional that we can do. But trying to at least do what we can to, to help that neighborhood up there. So they're the, they're the bottom, um, the bottom list of alleys in the alley listing on there. Otherwise, for, I included our, um, pavement conditions at the end of the, um, the listing. And for alleys, we only have thirty-nine that are in poor or fair shape. The rest of them are in good or excellent. So our alley improvement program, we're just about done with having to do that, so. There's forty-six that are unimproved that are on the west side that a couple of those we'll look at bringing forward. But those are really tough and we had two of those that were classified as unimproved that had petitions that came in. Um, I think it was last year or the year before and the neighbors didn't want them done. So I don't know how many of forty-six will, um, will, will stir up with proposing an alley improvement for those. But we'll, we'll look and see. In the spring, it's easy to tell because the ones that are being used, people are tucking mud on the streets. So you can kind of get a good test to see, um, which ones are, are actually being used for those. But the majority of the, the alleys are in the north river fronts, North Side Hill and then, uh, Sundet neighborhood area, but a couple in off of Water Street.
Do you think that the improvements on, on Sundet, you decide to assess with air snow?
Um, the other ones, like the East Side Hill, the feedback has been yes, um, for, uh, like snow blowers and easier to shovel, um, smooth pavement than kind of gravelly, so. Couple of hole-over projects from last year, we had three. Uh, one was Melby Street, it was all approved. Melby and Eddie Lane, uh, were held over to this year. The railroad got an extension to do their crossing project, so they didn't do their work. So we held off on ours until, uh, the railroad comes in. And those were approved with improving pedestrian connection across railroad crossings over to Hazy's Way, uh, for both of those. And then Lake Street, uh, from Farwell to Dewey Street, um, XL Energy was doing some gas, uh, work. And we were not able to get any and do that this year after the gas, so that will go next year. And that will have a similar cross-section to the part of Lake Street that, um, was done, um, this year, earlier this year. And, uh, it'll have bike lanes, so the bike lanes will extend to Dewey Street. So if they want to use Farwell Street, they can get over to Dewey Street and they can parallel Farwell Street onto Dewey Street. And then there'll be a, a driveway entrance for the temporary, um, transfer center, uh, when the transfer center is being reconstructed.
Is there any way to save the, the tree next to the Schlekel House?
Yeah, I think we're, I think that's an assumption, we're going to be saving that. We saved the one next to the church, because that was a little tighter than Schlekel though. Um, so, um, our partners in forestry, they have an airspeed, um, that they can help use if we get tight. They can go in and look at roots and, um, but we, we try to save trees, especially in the downtown area if at all possible.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's kind of a historic tree that goes along with the Schlekel House, you know?
Yep. Any nice tree in downtown. So West Grand Plaza, um, we did, we were going to try to get that bid this year and, um, we had, we had a bid once and there were some problems with the, the bidding on it. It was, it's being rebid currently. Uh, but it's basically, it's, it's not changing the, the, the size of it at all, it's just refreshing it. Having some decorative pavement, decorative, um, concrete in there, um, having kind of an upper and a lower plaza instead of having that sloped area. Um, then you'll have viewing across the river to, um, the Pablos Center. So this will be one of our, our parks things, that we're working with this year. Then it's really, really small, um, the River Walk, so we started the River Walk from Lake Street up to Pablos Center this year. We get, um, about a block of it done on the north side. The remaining portion from Lake Street up will be done next year and then, or this year now. And then we, we called it the Hope Castle Vision Trail, but it's actually an extension of the River Walk. It was, it was bid between Bartstow Street, Farwell Street to go underneath Farwell Street. And the bids came back fifty percent higher than the money we had budgeted to go all the way over to Dewey Street to do one block. So we, we reworked it and we're seeing if we can do it where it will connect to the sidewalk on Farwell Street and there wouldn't be a crossing at this point. And then when we do the trail through, uh, the library expansion, we'll see if there's some way to connect or you can connect to it in the future on it. But, um, if we can get positive bids for this, this is one that we're going to try and get that connection done this summer also. So you'd be able to go from Farwell Street along the rivers all the way to Lake Street without, um, without traveling on, on the street. We'll have an accurate crossing here, but. So that is a carryover from this year. This is the underpass at, uh, Madison Street. Trail comes down from the Cannery Trail. This is the existing trail with dash lines right now. Trail comes down, goes underneath the bridge and then comes back up and curves around over to Oxford and land with the city owns. And then there are some, there's a trail connection on top of Levy to the sidewalk. And then just, we're going to be including alternate to include stairs. So if people want to walk down from the sidewalk, they can do that. Our stair prices have been very expensive, so I don't know if we'll, we'll have to see what the bid prices come in. But at least that will provide an underpass under Madison Street for, uh, mimic what's on the other side of Madison Street. Yep, we'll have to close it when, um, at the same time we close the other side. Probably half dozen times a year, I would say, for it.
So there's not gonna be a, a trail going up to Madison Street on the north side?
It's already there.
Oh, so you're just gonna keep that way?
Yeah, that's existing. That's what we did before. So, uh, if you're in Madison, going to Madison Street and you're going through, you continue straight on the trail. And if you're on a sidewalk and you want to use it as a, as a crossing in Madison Street, then you can come on the trail with the steps going in. And then go back up and over. DNR is very excited about that one. Uh, and then less, less exciting, but still equally good. And, um, when we sit down and work on a trail program and, and with our community developer, community services, the asphalt trail is one that we're gonna look at when the, when the snow is gone, um, time to replace the asphalt and then we replace the asphalt with concrete. Nothing too fancy, uh, other than just upgrading the surface on it.
So there's like some sort of little plaza behind the office building there?
Yeah, I think there's a.
It's a little bizzy though.
I know there's one down here. And we aren't going to do anything with those. I mean, if, if there's something that needs to be fixed, we'll, we'll help all be fixed. But we're looking at, um, more of a maintenance for the trail portion. We get, um, we're on a three-year cycle with the, with the, uh, DNR where we get forty-five thousand dollars a year, forty-five thousand dollars a year, and then two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. And, um, this is an off-year for some of those funds and that forty-five thousand is meant for maintenance. And then we do some expansions when we have a larger two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
Just kind of wondering about, I mean, the clauses that are, at least the one that their cursor is by is like, like the condition of it is, is getting a different grade level of the trail, so I'm assuming they're all gonna smooth it out.
So the, the concrete will replace with the trail. Uh, I don't know for the, the, did the structure need anything on it, the overhead? That was painted, wasn't it?
It was painted.
So I think the, the vertical part of it, it should be in pretty good shape, but. Yeah, if we're going through a new concrete trail, we're not gonna leave, you know, we want to be in and out of there so we don't have to return in five years to replace all our stuff. Just what's that? Oh, this started, this was bid, um, and this was our construction in the spring. But the, uh, the birch pavilion stairs, um, going up, connecting to the upper part of Carson Park with the Ozway and the World. So that, that's in the works. The YMCA trail are the, the first leg to go from Carson Park Drive eventually over to Rod and Gun Park. Uh, this is lands that we own right here. Just a trail going through. There are fishing accommodations in this location and it's constructed. So if ADA accessible pier were to be, wanted to be sited here, it's set up for that. Then you could park in the parking lot, and that's what this is. You can, you can park in the parking lot where that, that pier drop is. You can walk over, you'd be able to launch a kayak if you wanted to go fishing and stuff like so. That's already construction. I've got, I think, a few council members on phone calls, um, this fall. We do have all of our DNR targets for that. Um, it was, went through waterways and parks and fully approved. The resident providing input, settled down a little bit after that. So that's the, the last of our, oh, then the one I forgot is Dewey Street Bridge is going to be bid during January. That's going through the DOT. And that'll be a historic redo of the, the, save the arches, but everything above the arches will be new. And that'll be nice and we'll have the underpass for the north side of it, so it won't be open. There'll be false panels poured in it, but at some point if the trail develops, goes underneath Dewey Street, all we have to do is remove those sacrificial panels and the underpass will be set to go on there. So, then the last part, I did include at the end of it, if you have questions from your constituents for assessment rates, there are assessment rates from last year and this year. And, um, we're down to seven percent of our streets in fair and poor condition. And ninety-three percent of them are in good and excellent shape, so we have pretty good streets, um, in the city.
That's your good.
Got started on it. It is, it is getting shorter every year, that's for sure. But I don't really, I haven't taken anything that's gonna be controversial like Keith and Pathwork a couple of years ago or like, uh, Roundabouts were last year. The feedback on State Street though, I haven't taken a single negative comment from residents. So everybody likes Roundabouts and everybody likes State Street, so. It was a lot of, a lot of work for, for your side of the, uh, the, uh, the council chamber and a lot of work on our side. But it ended up, it turned out better than I, than I thought of it. So I think we'll be in a pretty smooth year.
Any questions for Dave? Well, thank you for your time and, uh, that's a preview of the work to come. Have a good evening.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call seven-one-five-eight-three-nine-four-nine-one-two or TDD seven-one-five-eight-three-nine-one-six-eight-nine. Or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box five-one-four-eight, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, five-four-seven-zero-two-dash-five-one-four-eight. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven-one-five-eight-three-nine.